A couple of times it was getting to the bottom there.
Yeah, you take it out and then let's.
I I.
So you drop it on your wrist now.
No.
It might have been bad if if I would have known that.
This is.
What's wrong with the cable and the feed or what?
I don't know what's going on. Okay, if I would have known.
For next month.
But it's all connected.
Fix it for next month.
Help me down here with West Town.
There you go.
I bought it with twenty five thousand miles.
Then we need two. I unmuted those.
A mile thirty five thousand. Now we have that weekend.
No, I'm I can see hers.
Sharing.
We're sharing.
Is your door done?
Yeah.
Are you still got?
That's a. We're talking about viruses.
This mall that's covered that much of the doors when you see outside that's not all the doors.
Okay.
They're gonna take that off.
Thanks for Angie, I should sign all of them.
So we'll have a nine foot door.
I just gave her my.
Just doing it for you. Why don't you kind of re?
Picture up my stacks and.
That here's in order.
Two weeks.
You need that now, we'll see.
Front of my house. And so the other guy is gonna come and do the work here is another obvious guy.
Ready.
Meantime.
I'm ready.
Like you get out over more than six years out for that.
Well, no, this time.
We are live.
Come up our north and maybe.
Yep.
Let's all stand, uh, Mr. Shaddick's gonna say a prayer for us.
Father God, we come to you in the name of Jesus, Lord. We ask for your wisdom tonight. We ask that you lead us and guide us as we take care of the matters of this county. Father, we ask that you help us to love the people of Marshall County like you love them in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If at the November tenth twenty twenty five Marshall County Council will come to order. Uh, first on our agenda is public input on the things. On the agenda, there'll be an opportunity at the end to speak as well. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to come forward and speak? Chair sees none, we'll move on to the attorney report. Uh, we have an agreement in front of us, uh, to purchase a ban on anticipation note. Uh, Mr. Labind, do you wanna give us a little?
Sure, this is what we. Yeah, we discussed this prior meetings. Um, this is the ban that was taken out by the regional sewer district. Anticipation in getting a bond to fund the project as the project does not appear to be going forward. Remember, we sent the uh, letter down to Idam telling them that we would purchase the ban from Star to make it our whole. Um, the we've negotiated a uh, buy out of the note uh, with Star and uh, this is the resolution to approve that.
Um, if you look at page two, uh, the balance in a couple of days would be on November thirteenth is three million, three hundred and thirty seven dollars, three hundred and thirty seven thousand, one hundred and fifty two dollars. Each day it will increase four hundred and ninety two dollars for interest. By purchasing this note, we will receive hopefully over two million dollars. I've done some just initial calculations based on the testimony from the sewer district, but county's looking at picking up, you know, a debt of one point three to one point four million dollars. We do have it in our general fund to absorb it. Um, but we're here to vote on this purchase agreement, whether or not to submit it uh, to Star Financial Bank. Is there questions on the purchase agreement?
Aren't we doing this a little bit premature? I mean, they have thirty days to appeal, correct? Does it that and uh?
They do. We 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 asked um counsel for the regional sewer district and their response was they don't know if or when they will file an appeal. So the indication we got from the sewer district was they don't even know if they're going to appeal.
Well, I guess we should find that out before we do any vote on finishing it too.
We need them to hold a meeting. If they pull the meeting and take a vote.
They canceled. They canceled their next scheduled meeting. Um, they're they canceled the meeting that was scheduled for this month. Their next scheduled meeting is after the deadline to appeal. So if they don't, if they follow their currently their current meeting schedule since they canceled their their next meeting, um, the the December meeting would be too late for them to appeal. So if they follow the schedule they currently have published, they will not be appealing because they're past the deadline.
It seems to me we should be obligated to wait for thirty days of the appeal time before we do any kind of vote to.
That's up to you, but it costs the county five hundred dollars a day.
Potential commitment for the county.
It takes four people to call a meeting on that board and they could end this immediately, right? Does not take Tom McFadden. Doesn't take. It it just takes four people to say, hey, we want a meeting. Is that am I wrong on that?
I don't have their bylaws, but generally yes, if they have a quorum, they can.
All I'm saying is they have thirty days to do an appeal and I don't know what their schedule is, but I don't think that really matters. Uh, but I don't think we have any business on voting a payoff in the meantime and except just to make a show. Um, it's more of a political thing than a uh, uh administrative.
Could we make the agreement conditional of final approval and appropriation? Cause we still have to advertise for this. I mean, if we wait another thirty days to vote for this or have a special meeting, you know, the interest rates do uh, increase by five hundred.
Pay it off till after thirty days either, so.
No, we we purchase it. We're purchasing it from the the bank. We're not caring about the sewer board.
You can vote to approve the agreement and not um not.
You can purchase it without the sewer board's approval. This is what.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. So you can you can approve this agreement and then uh, give notice and then do the appropriation after, so.
What's our guarantee of getting the two point one back if we do that?
There is no guarantee. So here's part of the thing.
There is no guarantee, did you say?
Well, we can seize assets once we purchase it.
Put the the county at five million dollar and.
In our resolution, when we asked the commissioner to stop and and dissolve the the sewer district, we stated that we would as a county purchase the ban. So that was in the resolution that we gave to the commissioner. So we need to follow through with the word that we said, and that means he's saying he's dissolving it. Therefore, please stop interrupting me. You can have a turn to talk when I'm done. We purchased, we said we would purchase the ban, therefore we need to start that process. We have to advertise it. There's a ten day advertisement period before there's a hearing. And I feel like we need to move forward with that because I sat in Indianapolis and looked that commissioner in the eye and said, if with the resolution that we voted on, if you dissolve this, we will move forward and purchase the ban.
But it's not it's not dissolved yet. They have a thirty, they have a thirty day period from October thirty first.
This might help. In the event the sewer district does appeal and the sewer district does move forward, the sewer district would be obligated then to take out a bond. If the sewer district took out the bond, then they're obligated to repay the ban in full with interest, meaning that would make the county whole. So you're in no worse position by buying this early than you would be by buying it later. As a matter of fact, you're in a better position if you buy it now because you're brewing an additional five hundred dollars a day in interest for every day you wait.
They continue to take out loans or anything at this point? Or bonds or bands?
Well, I don't know. They can try. I given the procedural, given the procedural.
A meeting, they could call a meeting, they could end this thing in two days.
The worst case scenario is if we pay it out, they're not gonna have any money. We bought the loan.
Well, they still have money. We we bought the note, but they still have the proceeds being held in their bank account. So we've reached out to the attorneys for the sewer district saying, hey, Idam dissolved the district. Let's work together to wrap it up, get the proceeds of the money paid over to the county, and their response was, we don't know if they're gonna appeal yet or not.
I just had a quick question. Do we know where the extra proceeds are? Is it is it a local bank that has the proceeds?
Yes.
And we don't need to name that. I just wanted to confirm that wherever the monies are that we know.
That was confirmed today. Yes, that was confirmed today.
The last public record, I wish they would update their minutes and some of the other things. I believe goes back to August, but maybe it's September, but I looked at the um, bank balances that they had presented. And uh, it's gonna be roughly, you know, I would I would guess they're gonna get some interest income, but they're also gonna have some outstanding bills. They're gonna have between two million and two point one million. Uh, they need to wrap this up right now because every day they delay, there's interest uh, uh, expense that occurs, but they're also incurring legal expenses, which is there's no reason at this point to litigate this. Idam ordered it. We have sound um, reasoning. They have sound reasoning. They failed to uh, modify the plan. You know, I thought it was interesting. I'm gonna I'm gonna just go to that letter real quick. The Indiana Finance Authority told them on July through Baker Tilly and through their consultant JPR that you basically you're gonna have to modify the plan. They had at least three months notice with their consultants to modify the plan and they never did. Every day they delay, they're costing the county money, they're costing the taxpayers money. Why incur more legal expense to to appeal something? They they have extremely small chance of winning anything on this. And then they're going against the public who has diligently uh, put forward the argument and the effort. And you know, honestly, to try to go forward with this and appeal it strikes me as a ridiculous policy uh, possibility, and I I think they should just wrap it up right now. I think you're right. Maybe they can call a meeting without the president. Um, I know we can as a council. I don't know how they can do it, but they need to call a meeting, wrap this up, put this behind us, um, and accept the will of the people and the will of Idam, quite frankly.
And am I correct, Marcel? Like, we are making a motion that the council will back the purchase of the ban, but ultimately it's the commissioners that will decide when the ban will be paid off. We're just saying.
So you guys, you guys will say, look, we agree to the purchase agreement. The commissioners agree to the purchase agreement. You'll appropriate the funds. The commissioners are the ones who actually write the check.
Right.
Or approve the transfer of funds in this case.
We're looking just to start the process.
I'd like to make a motion that we start the process of purchasing the note agreement for the ban for the Marshall County Regional Sewer District.
Motion by Mrs. Cox, second by Mr. Patterson, is that correct? To go forward to purchase the bond anticipation note in a in an agreement as presented. Is there further discussion? Chair sees none. Those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six to one.
And you also have a resolution. Are you looking to approve that this evening as well? That was sent with the special purchasing, special purchasing methods? I don't have it up on the screen. I apologize.
I couldn't quite hear you.
A special purchasing method? Are you looking to approve that resolution tonight as well?
We don't have that before us, but it would come out of the county council or sorry, the general fund. Um, so we should probably make a motion of where this money is gonna come from and she'll advertise where it's gonna come from, so. Um, I'll make a motion that the amount necessary to purchase the ban will be approximately three point four million dollars. Again, we will receive the assets by the district. That's part of the order, so the net result will be one point three to one point four. My motion will be to purchase the ban uh, with an advertisement of next month or as soon as possible. Actually, let me re- rephrase that. My motion is to uh, purchase the band with uh, general fund money uh, and to advertise as quickly as possible the amount needed.
A second.
You heard the motion. Is there discussion?
So whose response? This will be the whole county's response, the taxpayers of the whole county's responsibility. Is that correct?
Fortunately.
Unfortunately, you know, I mean, uh, you look at the dollar amount spent to save the taxpayers and the ratepayers money. Um, that's what it takes. And so I think you had ratepayers in District One who could have seen a mandate of two hundred, two hundred and fifty a month. Hookup fees of fifteen thousand dollars approximately. Um, and that was just one district. You push that out to all the other districts. We're talking tens, twenty, hundreds of millions of dollars.
The sewer board has been a complete failure. This could have been lower amount months ago when commissioners and people of the public told them to stop spending money. We're here because they've been, they have failed to listen to the people. They're still failing to listen to the people. They could call a meeting immediately, get this resolved and say us mu- save us money. And they haven't been willing to do so. So it's okay to be upset with the sewer district for months of delay, months of neglect and everything else, not listening to the people. So we're here, we're gonna bail out our citizens, we're gonna help them out, and this was a failure of government on on the sewer board, absolute failure.
Am I correct to understand that um, by paying this loan off, anything that JPR did now will come to the county itself, so we will have those all those records, everything that they put together. So this is all the plans, everything.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know how much money is still outstanding in accounts payables basically by the sewer district. Fifty, sixty, seventy thousand a month was a ru- routine claims amount. Uh, JPR hasn't done much work apparently. I think you're looking at some legal bills though that are are.
Insurance, their insurance company was covering their legal.
I'm talking about consulting bills from the sewer district. Uh, attorneys who are continually, you know, doing work. If they would wrap this up, their attorneys can no longer bill uh, the sewer district. Uh, I I don't think they're cheap. And so the more they delay and the more they go to legal counsel, they just keep racking up more and more debt. Uh, this is not in my opinion, an issue that they can win, nor is it worth even fighting for at this point. So I would encourage the sewer board to have a meeting, have it quickly, and let's just wrap this up. So the motion was by myself, then we can have further discussion if you guys would like. Okay, again, to reiterate the motion, I made a motion to uh, advertise as quickly as possible out of the general fund the amount appropriate to pay this off. It's gonna be in the approximate amount of three point four million dollars. Uh, and then again, we will receive uh, the assets from the district uh, between two and two point one estimated. Who made it?
You made the motion.
You seconded? Okay. Is there further discussion? Chair sees none. Those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Six to one. Supporting the motion. Marcel, is there anything else on your attorney report?
Oh.
Let's move on to uh, Highway Subcommittee Report. Is there anything?
We're about to have a meeting Thursday.
Okay.
Had a report from the last time. Thursday at ten AM.
Yeah, I will not be in attendance on that. I might try to call in. They had screwed up my schedule that week.
Okay. Anything else to report? Highway? No.
Can I for a second, Tim?
Yeah.
I make a motion to add Dan Tanner and Commissioner Jesse Bohannon to the end of the agenda and the end of our agenda.
Well, they can always speak to a public input, so that'd be fine. Yeah.
Okay.
I don't I don't know if you need a motion.
Okay.
Um, okay, moving on to budget finance report. Um, I will just report that as of uh, October thirty first, the general fund had nine million, two hundred and forty four thousand, four hundred and three dollars. Um, again, we will have enough money in the general fund to purchase the band note. Um, county funds look good. Um, I think if we purchase the band and uh, get the assets back and if we uh, approve some of these appropriation requests, we're looking at an end of the year uh, recalculation of approximately nine million dollars in the general fund, four million in rainy days, still a healthy balance of thirteen million combined. Given these two new developments. That's it. That's all I have for you guys. Okay, let's move on to uh, some additional appropriations. And those are before us, commissioners.
Waits and measures. Wait some measures on there.
Ah.
Six AM.
Yes. I must have an old agenda here. Okay.
Yeah, mine's not.
Yeah, there was.
Yeah, we all did.
Okay.
I mean, is that put a new one up there before the meeting? Sorry, we all did, cause that was added after we printed. Sorry, guys.
Thank you for the updated one. Okay, uh, Mr. Kloss, will you come forward? Looks like you're on the uh, agenda for waits and measures.
And uh, our weights and majors, head weights and major, Jerry Huss with me. Stan Kloss, uh, Commissioner District One. Take your name and title, Jerry.
Jerry Huss, weights and measures inspector for Marshall County.
And what we have here is is just basically uh, you'll see the two pictures. I have another one here. That's a little bit different. It's getting very difficult basically to take care of the county's growing. We're getting another truck stop here before along by next year uh, to do all these uh, gas pumps by hand in the county. So I'm gonna let Jerry talk to you a little bit, tell you what all uh, what all he does and why this is relevant.
Okay, basically, just to give you an inner uh, insight into how it's grown. When I started this job eleven years ago, we had one truck stop. Next year we were at five. It's a pretty dramatic growth. Um, all the new gas stations that are being built in the county are on the large size. The most recent one a few years ago was the uh, Casey's over in Bremen. Which I don't know if any of you have been over there or if you live in that area. I'm seeing one shake heads up there. Um, they've got every octane under the sun plus diesel. And that thing is a monster to do with two five gallon cans, cause that's all I've got. So and you know, other stations are that big too. All the the two family expresses we have here in Plymouth are on the large size too. And uh, you know, they just take a long time to do, and it's not so much necessarily for me, but for the job and whoever's gonna come after me down the road. But uh, it's it's try to carry two five gallon cans, cause every time you fill them up, you gotta go empty, put them back in the ground. And you can imagine how long that'll take. And you're not only disrupting the flow in the gas station itself, but you're relying on somebody up there to turn the pump on. I can't turn the pump on. I can punch a button, it rings a bell inside, they have to turn it on. So and I almost have to have one person standing there the whole time I'm doing that, which can take hours for any one gas station alone. So that's why I proposed this and the sheets I gave you when I came in, the lab sheet is what this unit would look like. Uh, this is built by a company called Seraphin. They are the premier builder of these types of equipment. And uh, they are certified by the National uh, Ways and Measures uh, Department out of Washington DC, so they are a certified unit. I it will have to be taken back to our county, our our uh, Ways and Measures down in Indianapolis every two years to be recertified, just like I do with all my other equipment. So I guess with that, does anybody have any questions?
You're getting a new one down in Argus too, aren't you?
That's the fifth, that will be the fifth uh, truck stop. Plus they also have a new gas station in downtown, which used to be the hardware store.
I sold them out.
You sold them. Yeah, you know too much.
What Terry's talking about too, this machine or this trailer has three compartments that when he checks them, he will not have to carry five gallon cans anymore across the parking lot to dump them. That's a job. Look at, look at where they fill the transports.
Yeah.
Fill the tanks and carry them from the pumps. This will hold it all as he does at a station and you dump it all at once. So it's got three, what is it, three tanks, a hundred gallons each?
Three tanks, a hundred gallons each on.
And uh, the price, you find it here.
It's on the second page.
The price, the price total delivered was forty eight thousand, seven hundred and forty seven dollars. Thirty five hundred dollars of that's transportation to get it here. Quite frankly, if we do this, I'm not paying these guys thirty five hundred bucks. I'll take a pickup truck and go to New Jersey and pick it up for seven, eight hundred bucks. Joe chose to do this.
What what's the most you would ever pour into a tank just for measurement purposes? Five gallons, ten gallons?
You have to look at how many stations you got. What, what you have, let's say a standard one is an eighty-seven, eighty-nine, ninety-three. And then diesel. You have to draw five gallons on each one of those. Diesel, you have to do twice.
Also, that's why you would go from pump to pump to pump to pump.
Yeah, every-
And keep the same gas in a potential hundred and ten gallon storage tank. Is that what you're saying?
It's a hundred gallons. There's three tanks on this unit with a hundred gallons in each tank. So in other words, you could do a whole lot for a hundred gallons and get through the station a lot quicker, plus it's a lot less wear and tear on a person. Each five gallon can with gasoline in it weighs about fifty to sixty pounds. So you have to do that constantly.
Do you find much of a discrepancy between the pumps and what you're measuring?
In this county, I've been very fortunate, no.
I wondered that.
If I do find it, and I've had some instances where companies go ahead and put new pumps in and don't bother to tell me till I walk, till I show up. I've had some that weren't calibrated worth a darn, and I've had to have them come back. I just shut them down and have-
To their advantage, of course.
Huh?
To their advantage?
No, it was to your advantage, yes. Not the station's advantage.
You can let us know later where those pumps are. Fixed. I wanna know you, Jerry.
I know where they're at, how much you wanna pay them.
So when you go, when you go to a, a station, I mean, I know we see your, your stickers and everything. You do the, every single pump, every single type? It's not a random, I'm gonna do-
No, it's not random. Have to do everyone and go once a year. Yeah, it needs to be certified once a year. And not only that, you gotta understand, I am certified by the state to do my job. I work for these guys and you guys, but I have to be certified by the state. So, and that's why, well, next week I've got my annual conference, which we all have to go to, otherwise we lose our certification. It's real easy.
So Jerry, do you know other people that have similar equipment like this and they're happy with it?
Yes, very much so. Elkhart County has one, St. Joe County has one. Porter County, I'm very close with the inspector over there, because he's on the state board with me. And he has one on order. He's just waiting for it to show up. And I, like I told Stan, I says, guess what? He's gonna go get his, too. And drive over all the way to New Jersey and pick it up rather than pay the thirty-five hundred bucks.
And you see, excuse me, if you notice the picture, the one in the back of the pickup truck, same process, almost the same amount of money, but the reason we're not gonna do that is because a half ton pickup won't carry that. We'd have to buy a new truck, three quarter ton, and there's not that much difference in price, so I don't wanna buy a new truck.
So you're gonna pull it on a trailer?
Yeah, yeah, the trailer comes with it, that-
I understand that you pull it on the trailer.
It's a pull behind trailer.
Pull behind trailer.
The truck they bought me years ago comes, it came with a hitch and wiring already on it, so that's not an issue with that. And just to give you, for instance, that truck is a two thousand sixteen when we got it brand new. I got it in July of sixteen. I just turned twenty-five thousand miles with it. Figure out how many years that is.
So is that gonna be kept at the highway garage inside somewhere, or is it gonna be-
There is, at the, the old EMS building out there, there is room in there to store that.
Pretty valuable piece of equipment.
Absolutely. You, you gotta remember, all this stuff on this is stainless steel. So.
It's the cleaning procedures. What are you gonna have to go through once you utilized it at one place? Gotta clean it out, is there?
No, it'll be empty. It'll be empty before I leave that particular station. So no, you don't have to clean it out.
And then the follow-up with the warranty? Where, where do you have to take it for that, or do they have technicians come here?
The warranty is on that one sheet. If you read through that, it'll say everything. I think there is some, if we have a problem, they would send a part, and we'd have to send the old part back to them, or the defective part of it back.
Hopefully, you have someone here skilled to do that.
Of course.
I asked him, it basically, they have parts in Indianapolis when he gets recertified? Because that was my question, too, Jim. What about warranty when it's made in New Jersey? So-
Service and warranty are everything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I did, I don't know, Madam, I remember now, I was gonna ask you today, did you get an answer on Q cap for the, or Q cap for this?
We do not have an answer for that yet.
Okay. We talked about one, or at least should be an option for Q cap or not. At this point, I don't know. I guess tonight, what I would say is if you're interested, would vote for a move forward by the next meeting. We do an appropriation because they wanna part of the money down to order it, and we do appropriation, try to figure out where the money would come from before, you know, you had to vote.
The delivery on this, too, is like sixteen to eighteen weeks after we make the down payment on it. There's a lot of people like me in this country. And that would be an ideal time to get this thing, like in April or May. That's almost the perfect ideal time to hit the ground running. You really don't wanna ever certify a gas station in the middle of winter. Gasoline, believe it or not, is a lot like water. They don't mix, but it's a lot like water, because it contracts and expands with the temperature, even though it's an underground tank. You do not wanna do it in January. By the time you hit June, it's gonna be off the charts.
Does it take a special insurance, Stan, to cover this with the value of this piece of equipment?
We, we just put it on our policy like we do the highway trucks, everything else. Yeah. Just physical, I mean, your normal liability would cover-
Replacement on one of those, it's not gonna get cheaper.
No, no, being all stainless steel, no, it will not. It'll go up every year. So we would put it on our policy like we have everything else around here, all the vehicles and trucks and police vehicles and-
Then you know you have good insurance when you have a claim.
So far.
So far, so good.
So far, so good, yes.
You have enough money in Q cap if you could use that to-
I think we should. We need to look at it. I mean, we could stretch it out a couple of years, but for this amount, I'm not sure it's worthwhile. I, I think that'd be an option that we could look at. If you didn't wanna come up all at once, we could put it in his budget, you know, maybe twenty thousand a year, and do it over a couple of years. But that's something we'd have to look at. I guess I would leave it up to your recommendation, what you would like us to do, if you so wanna move forward.
I think it's a great idea. He needs a piece of equipment.
Speaking on behalf of us retired guys, that is-
Because it would say that it's not getting-
A lot of work.
It's not getting easier.
No, my goodness, I, I, I commend Jerry. I don't think I could do it anymore.
Not against the purchase. And I don't like the price. Can you tell me how you went about finding this? Are there other comparable pieces of equipment out there?
They are the ones that make them.
They're the only ones who make them?
You're, you're looking at it. And you gotta remember, it's not just making them. It's, you gotta be, they have to be certified, too, by the national organization.
So are you looking for a motion of support? Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, if you so choose, then we would come back to you next meeting with how, some recommendations, how to pay for it.
We spend a lot of money for lots of things.
I know.
And even though you have to swallow hard when you look at that, you know, you kind of, what you pay for, you kind of get, you know?
About the same thing, though, Tim. I bet, well, it's a lot of money for that machine, but it's all stainless.
Well, when you go to the gas station, you want that number to be right, don't you?
Yep.
I would like to make a motion and support.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Masterson, second by Mrs. Johnson, is our discussion. I'm gonna support it, but please try to find a cheaper price if you can. Boy, I don't wanna say no about this piece of equipment, but gosh. Stan, why don't you go pick it up? Save us some money.
I am, I am. If we buy it, I am, I'm gonna go get it.
Your discount.
Just get that in writing.
Go out and get it for seven, eight hundred bucks, is the most. You know?
That was my discussion. Any other discussion? So you'll try to get it out of Q cap first, is that?
We will look at that and see if that fits Q cap. If not, I can contact you, and you guys can give me some guidance if it doesn't fit. If it does fit, would you wanna do it one lump sum, or do you wanna? I don't know.
Is there any interest involved in that? Is there any interest involved, and if we separate it out, or?
There'd be interest involved, yeah. If we, if we broke it down to a couple of years, yes, there would be.
Yeah.
We'd be paying interest.
Yes.
That's right.
But you know what? We'd be very naive if we did not, if we think that everything's gonna be status quo in Marshall County. It's not gonna happen. Drive out North Michigan Street and see what's happening. The county's gonna have additional convenience stores that offer everything.
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, you might be at five, you know, two or three years, you're gonna be probably that many more.
It's just, like I said, I've been doing this for eleven years, and I can't believe how this county's grown. Matter of fact, when I took this job eleven years ago, and this is part-time, you gotta remember, I'm the smallest department in the whole county. But the point is, someday, this is gonna be a full-time job. Not in my lifetime, but it will be.
But, um, I, I think in the commissioner meeting, I think you brought up, or somebody did, some counties charge for this service?
Oh, yeah. Don't even bring that up. You know, I'll tell you something funny. A few years ago, they got a new secretary at the high school over here in the athletic department. I do the Ways and Major, or I mean, I do the wrestling scales also. I have to certify those. And I went over, made the arrangements, went over, did that job, certified it. A week later, she calls me on the phone and says, when are you gonna send me an invoice? And I started laughing at her, and she says, why are you laughing? And I says, do you pay taxes? And the answer obviously is yes. I says, you paid for it. But, yeah, there is a county in Indiana, but I'd love to see you go to Chicago, but they do charge when they come out.
We know which direction.
Busy enough that they pay.
I'm really gonna support it, because I like-
Maybe I should tell them I'll charge them, but it's cash only.
Fun guy. I mean, we, maybe we can hang out sometime, here, fun guy.
Use a home, that was Jerry Huss.
Would never do that.
Do you need to vote on this?
Well, we have a motion by you and, and seconded, so the motion is to support it. Stan said he would look into the, or the Q cap first. If not, it's probably coming out of general, but we'll we'll support it if we pass it. So is there further discussion? Chair sees done. Those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thanks, everybody.
All right. You're welcome.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, I do have a, I didn't want to public input. I don't know if you want me to come back up later, or you want me to do it now?
How long is it gonna be?
Just a couple of minutes, at the most.
Go for it, go for it, go for it.
I sent you all here a week ago, and I think, did you forward that to everybody? I forgot to ask you that email.
I believe so.
Yeah, and it had two items on there. The second one was the public safety grants. We passed them for fifty thousand dollars for eight units. I have talked several of you here in private about maybe redistributing some of that for law enforcement. We have an issue to where we have cases going on this county. We don't have the manpower, drug cases, to tackle them, build the cases and get these people off the street and keep the poison off the street. So I'm asking, just, my suggestion is, and Commissioner Bohannon's back here, too, he may have some other thoughts on it. But lowering that fifty thousand to forty, taking that ten thousand, I just wanna make an eighty and put it on the prosecutor's office, officer's special projects, which will allow him, I would say, probably put some guidelines on it. And it's still gonna be public safety. It's just gonna be redistributed a little bit differently. And give us some help, because basically, part of this problem is county-wide. It's not just the county itself. It's in Plymouth. It's in Plymouth big time. It's in Culver, Argus, Bremen, on a smaller scale, but it is there. And that way, everybody have a little input, little buy-in. And it just went off all on the county, but I just think we need to, there's a lot of things going on. We don't know about his private citizens. And it's out there. We need to try to keep this poison out of this county. And there's people, when their scent's rolling over on other people, I don't have the manpower to build the cases. So I guess I would, I'm just asking if there's an interest. We would look at this board, but if not, say so, and it dies right here.
You talked to the prosecutor about this?
I talked to prosecutor about it. Yeah, he didn't seem to have a problem. I talked to Nick and prosecutor, both. Told him when I was asking if I was crazy for trying this, they go, no. And so, but I would, I would definitely say if we did it, there should be some guidelines, what the money could be used for, and maybe if we try a one-year trial balloon to see what kind of results we get, if it's worthwhile or not. I, I really don't feel comfortable coming to you and asking for general fund money, with everything else that's going on right now. So I thought this is the way to try to do it. And frankly, we're not really taking money away from any fire department, because it's a gift anyhow. So we're just redistributing a little bit from fifty to forty and trying to tackle another problem with that extra money. So I guess that's all I'm asking now. Is there an interest or is there not? And-
You're talking about drugs?
Yes.
And, you know, I know where you're going.
I sent you that email. I kinda wanna keep some of it a little bit more private. But yes.
Jesse, do you wanna speak on this?
Yep. Yeah, just very briefly, for the folks at home, Commissioner Jesse Bohannon, I certainly share Stan's sentiment that this is an opportunity to make Marshall County safer, that we're currently missing. And then I do believe that we should find some way to, to fund that and to try to do it without tapping into the general fund. I know a couple of us are gonna meet with Steve Dalton coming up pretty soon to talk about plans to spend the opioid settlement money. And my preference would be to hit this with the opioid settlement money first, if that's an option. And then if that's not an option, to look at, at what Stan suggested as a, as a second option. But I certainly would, would support the effort to, to fund this, so.
And we've, we've talked about this, and there's a little confusion on the opioid settlement money. I've asked more questions. I haven't got a chance to talk Jesse since that. But most of the opioid settlement money basically is used on the backside. There, there is some, I don't wanna say statute, but there's some rules and regulations that the states put out on how that money can be spent. It talks about basically rehabilitation, prevention, and stuff like that. I don't know if it qualifies to do the front side, you know, to try to catch them before in the act. But that's something we look at, and I say, right now, I don't think that qualifies, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Anyone like to weigh in on this?
We're the crossroads of the northern part of the state. A lot of stuff comes in and out.
And, and what's happening, too, is when people get sends and the hard reality hits, how long they're going away for. All of a sudden, they wanna make a deal, you know, and they're throwing, they're throwing other, their friends under the bus. And whether we like it or not, there's a lot going on in this county that we don't know about as citizens, because our law enforcement people out there are trying to do the best they can. But it'd be nice, we had a little manpower to help build, when these cases pop up, to build them cases and get decent. I'm not asking, I'm not talking about the guy that runs somewhere and gets a little personal whatever, you know? I'm talking about the guys that are making a living at it and just steadily bringing that, that poison into this county.
How much are you looking forward to starting this?
You know what? It depends. You know, just throwing an idea out there. I was looking at ten grand off of each one, which would be eighty grand. So they still need to get forty in the fire departments. And that eighty could go under the, under the authority of the prosecutor, too, for like special projects as, as needed.
It'd be nice if we could maybe get to other cities in the county to-
Fortunately, I've talked about them, I've had no luck. Did you follow up on the one we talked about?
Yes.
You had, do you have any luck?
No.
There you go.
But I, I, and I, I we need to have some public pressure to, to get this done. And the drugs are a serious, serious problem in our county, and they're not getting any better. They're getting worse every day. And I, I, I'm a hundred percent in agreement with what you wanna do, and I'd really like to see the other towns and cities participate financially as well.
I agree with you, Frank.
Yeah.
Technically, I would agree with you a hundred percent, but this is, this is the only way I can come up with, to try to have them have some input. Technically, I would agree with you a hundred percent, but this is kind, this is the only way I can come up with to try to have them have some input. And just take back some of the money.
I really wanted to take the opportunity to say, I wanted to take the opportunity to say that so the towns and say others towns and cities.
I I have already met with some of them towns, I've talked to them in private settings. To this point, nobody's been willing to step up. So my only thought was, doing it this way, everybody has a little skin in the game, even though it's our money, we're giving them, we're just, you know, putting it back into that, we're redirecting it, but at least somehow they got a little skin in the game.
So the opioid uh, settlement money, there's restricted and unrestricted, right?
There's eighteen, nineteen thousand unrestricted, I think there's around two hundred, maybe a hair over restricted. We could use the unrestricted, yeah, use restricted, I don't believe.
Unrestricted is uh, is that right?
No, that's what we just got.
Restricted according to this uh, cash balance report is sixty one thousand.
No, I don't think so.
Restricted is two hundred and twelve.
That is correct. Got another deposit.
I have backwards, I'm sorry. Oh, sixty one thousand, I bet we had just about twenty.
We did, then we got a deposit.
We just got.
We just got one.
Well, you're talking about perpetual, you know, number going forward. I know, I know what Greg is saying about having the others participate. I hate to take it away from others who we've promised the money to, that's my whole thing, so.
I agree, but I didn't want to go to general fund for it either, so.
If you can get it through the restricted and the unrestricted, obviously, you've got two to three years of funding right there, so.
Well, what I, what I suggest, one year, let's see how it works, let's make sure we get our bang for our buck before we go too far.
We paying for J cap ourselves, or is that?
Yeah.
Can we use the opioid mine to cover J cap?
Yeah, you can use it for J cap.
You could probably divert it a little bit.
So when you say a year to try it out, where it's, it's, it's just, are you talking about a temporary employee or?
That would be up to the prosecutor.
Okay.
I know there's other, other towns that have a line, or excuse me, other counties have a line under budget for the prosecutor for special projects. I would just say, I'm not looking, reinvent the wheel. Just uh, hear that one year to use it, see what he gets out of it, and we'll see if we get results or not. If not, we don't go any farther with it.
I think there's been some pretty significant cases.
Yeah.
Sounds like the council's fairly favorable, I'm not going to speak for everyone, but that's what I'm getting, so. I guess we also should have some sort of what personnel committee or something, there has to be something that comes forward a little bit more formal.
Well, we have to also change the uh, ordinance that governs that fifty thousand, if we did that. So yeah, maybe it goes personnel committee, take a look at it, I don't know where it would go from here, be honest with you.
Make a motion to refer it to personnel.
I mean, I don't know.
Is it personnel or is it a name answer?
There needs to be, I, I, I think you should get a formal proposal put together and say here's, here's the job, here's the, the amount of money we need. And and uh, see if you can dig into some of these funds and and find it, you know, that's, that would be my.
It sounds like some of this will be contractual, like they're not Marshall County employees.
They will be contractual?
Could be, that's what the counties do. They'll hire, they'll hire retired detectives or retired police officers to do that kind of work. In some cases, that's what happens. What if I talk to Nelson, maybe bring you back a report next meeting?
I'd like something a little bit more formal, a little bit more specific and detailed. I mean, I, again, I'm, I'm speaking for everyone here, but I think the general sentiment, sentiment is pretty positive.
We can look at it.
It would be, it would be nice, I, I'm, I'm supportive, I told you that on the phone. Um, of it, it would be nice to hear from the prosecutor on some game plan.
I didn't want to go too far because I wasn't sure where you guys were at, so.
Well, and maybe the person that is going to affect the most.
I can get with Nelson and we can try to put something together for you and bring back to you, okay?
Maybe you and I together could go talk to.
I have no problem.
I could get pretty excited about.
I hope you have a better learn than I did, so.
We can at least get a meeting.
Yeah, we've already had meetings, but yeah, we can get, we can get another, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to additional appropriations. Looking at the general fund will go down line by line, there are different uh, departments, commissioners are requesting six hundred thousand out of the general fund for stone, gravel and aggregates. Jesse or Stan, you want to help us out on that one? I'm, before I even, I'd, I'd like a little discussion on this.
Yeah, so this is um, what we had talked about during the, the budget process. Uh, this is Jason's estimate for what he thinks, uh, we need to get the year started next year on uh, on road repair. And so this is, this is money that we were going to spend next year. And instead, we're trying to spend it before the end of the year, so that we can buy these materials before the price increase on January first. And also to make sure that we've got all the materials on the ground and ready to go, so when the weather turns in the spring, we can hit the ground running. So that's, that's the reason why the request is coming now, instead of next year. So basically, if we would continue to do this, it wouldn't really be an increase in spending, but it would just shift the purchasing of materials back a couple of months on, in a perpetual basis, so that this year we buy next year's material and next year we buy material for the year after, so.
I want to look at your local road and street uh, real quick, um, have you thought about taking it out of there?
I, I haven't looked at that number, I just, this was something that we had discussed uh, um, during the budget process, that we, we pulled a big chunk out of uh, the highway request out of the budget with the expectation we would come back and ask for it before the end of the year for an addition for this year, so I'm just following up on that discussion.
I'm just going to look at your fund real quick. Here with me. Takes a while to get there, eleven, come on, eleven sixty nine, uh, current balance, four hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars. Spent a million out of it already this year. What's the council's uh, desire on this appropriation?
And this is something we discussed before, in the, in the uh, budget meetings, also at, at the highway department as well.
This is something that I've been uh, very pro doing and looking at the year you're having. And prepping it for, you know, the next year, then if you got a down year, you know, the following year is not going to be, you know, able to really heavy hit. You know, that being said, uh, what got me reservations was uh, you know, what we had to take care of tonight for the sewer board, and and so, I mean, that was okay, um, until, you know, until we get the money in hand, that, that
It sounds, it sounds like this is the six hundred thousand dollars that the sewer board spent since we told them to stop spending in February.
That's what it feels like.
Well, if this is approved, um, and the sewer board, I mean, there's still going to be approximately nine million in the general fund at the end of the year, I'm just laying that out for you guys.
Well, we talked about this. And the consensus was, we go forward with this and we lay it out, so we've got it. I know there's other expenses that are there, but if we have to tighten our belt to do other things, you have to have a rope to drive to get to these places, so. I understand, or the, the rest of you folks may think a different way, but I feel like we talked about it and we were for that and I'm still for it.
So would there be a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Masterson to approve the request, is there a second? Second by Mr. Patterson, is there discussion? Chair sees done, you heard the motion, those in favor will say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thanks, Jesse.
We have a reduction, I'm sorry, we have an additional of uh, seven thousand out of the general fund for legal services in the B Z A, is there a motion? Motion by Mrs. Johnson, second by Mrs. Cox, is a discussion? Chair sees on, those in favor of the additional will say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. We have a reduction in the contractual services of seven thousand dollars out of the plant commission. Is there a motion?
Prove that, oh yeah.
Who weighed the motion? Motion by Mr. Masterson, second by Mrs. Cox to approve the reduction of seven thousand out of the plant commission, is there discussion? Chair sees none, those in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion carries, uh, Superior Court two out of the general fund.
Is, um, I have spoken and emailed back and forth with uh, Judge Aldrich. It does not all need to come out of general fund, so I think we need to not approve this. Um, it's actually, um, he would only need out of a general fund, let me.
Three thousand twenty-five.
Three thousand twenty-five?
Yeah.
Um, and then the rest is monies he could move around within his own budget.
You could make a motion to reduce it to three thousand twenty-five, do you want to make that motion? Motion by Mr. Shattuck, second by Mr. Compton, to reduce the appropriation to three thousand twenty-five dollars, is that correct? Is there discussion? Chair sees done, those in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Just want to say thank you to Brandon for checking with the judge and being able to save us some money out of the general fund.
Okay, uh, general uh, fund of three thousand dollars out of Superior Court three for court, court-appointed doctors. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Cox, second by Mr. Shattuck, okay. To approve the additional three thousand dollars, is there discussion? Chair sees none, those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Lit special purpose, uh, fifty-five thousand dollar additional requested, uh, land acquisition, I assume that's for the Bowen building. Correct? Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Motion by Mrs. Johnson, second by Mr. uh, Masterson, is there discussion? Chair sees done, those in favor of the additional as presented will say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Epics is looking for uh, an additional sixteen thousand for professional services out of their fund, is there a motion?
Some moved.
Motion by Mrs. Cox, second by Mr. Shattuck, uh, to approve the additional sixteen thousand coming out of the Epics fund, is there discussion? Chair sees done, those in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. See a Marcel. Got a lot of transfers here. For an elected transfer from office supplies to training, uh, in the amount of one thousand dollars, is there a motion? Motion by Mr. Shattuck, second by Mr. Masterson, is there discussion? Chair sees done, those in favor of the transfer will say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Let's do the next three in one vote. We have three transfer requests coming out of the general fund plant commission. Five hundred from travel mileage to office equipment, three hundred from repairs on furniture and equipment to office furniture and fixtures. Repair and furniture equipment again at a hundred to office equipment totaling nine hundred dollars, is there a motion? Motion by Mrs. uh, Johnson, second by Mr. Shattuck, uh, to approve the three uh, transfers, is there discussion? Chair sees none, those in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. General fund Superior Court transfer of a thousand dollars from office furniture to office supplies, is there a motion? Motion by Mrs. Cox, second by Mr. Masterson, is there discussion? Chair sees none, those in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. clerk records perpetuation is looking to move uh, two funds, uh, two transfers totaling twenty-six thousand five hundred dollars. Repair and furniture equipment, office furniture, two office furniture and fixtures of fifteen hundred. Micro filming, twenty-five thousand to office furnitures and fixtures, is there a motion?
Some moved.
Motion by Mr. Shattuck, second by Mr. Masterson to approve both transfers, is there discussion? Chair sees none, those in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Uh, health fund professional services to medical supplies. Two thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents, professional services transferred to office furniture fixtures of two thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents, is there a motion to approve both transfers?
Some, some moved, second.
Motion by Mrs. Cox, second by Mrs. Johnson, is there a discussion? Chair sees done, those in favor of the transfers will say aye. Those opposed, same sign, transfers carries. Uh, M V H restricted, um, to M V H, we have wages road foreman into wages road foreman of the uh, regular of eight thousand three hundred thirty-four dollars. Uh, the restricted where wages area leader into the unrestricted twelve thousand nine hundred sixty-two dollars and two cents. Is there a motion to approve both transfers?
They're moved.
Motion by Mr. Patterson, second by Mr. Compton to approve both transfers, is there discussion? Chair sees none, those in favor of the transfers will say aye. Those opposed, same sign, trans, motion carries. Uh, community corrections transfer, uh, wages road foreman into wages road foreman into a P C S P S C account of eight thousand three hundred thirty-four dollars, is there a motion? Motion by Mrs. Cox, second by Mr. Masterson to approve the transfers, discussion. Chair sees none, those in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Solid waste has one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight transfers, we'll take a vote. For all eight, uh, as one vote. We have office and warehouse supplies transferred into P P E and uniforms to two thousand. Depo repair and maintenance transferred into building grounds, building and grounds of eighteen hundred. Education program supplies, a fifteen hundred dollar transfer into software and security. Uh, education program supplies, another uh, transfer into education soft, education and training, sorry. Liability transfer of three thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars into communications. Appliances and electronics, uh, three thousand seven hundred dollar transfer into universal base and batteries. Lines electronics, uh, electronics, okay, of one hundred dollars, uh, transferred into household hazardous waste. Lines electronics, uh, transfer of one thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars into technology. All eight transfers in one motion, please.
They're moved.
Second.
The motion by Mr. Compton, second by Mr. Shattuck to prove, to approve all eight transfers as presented, discussion? Chair sees none, those in favor of the transfers will say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. We have a ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirty-two, um, whereas the auditor has reviewed the financial statement and found two funds that have been inactive or dormant for several years and have no outstanding obligations, um, you see the funds in front of you, two thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars, child advocacy And nine hundred fifty-two dollars and eighty-one cents. The ordinance will transfer the larger number into the general fund. And the smaller number of nine hundred fifty-two dollars eighty-one cents into drug-free community. Is there a motion on the ordinance?
Some moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Masterson, second by Mrs. Cox is their discussion. Chair sees done. Those in favor of approving ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirty-two will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Minutes from last meeting. I trust that you read them. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Some moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Johnson, second by Mr. Shattuck to approve the. October thirteen twenty twenty-five minutes is their discussion. Chair sees none. Those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Levin Law invoice, uh. In the amount of one thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars. You can see the itemization before us. Is there a motion to prove the invoice as presented?
No move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Shattuck, second by Mr. Patterson to approve the mouth, to approve the invoice. Is there discussion? Chair sees done. Those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Schedule. Is still on for five thirty. Two budget meetings in the morning in August and September. Is there discussion on the schedule or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second by Brandon.
Yep.
Motion by Mr. Uh, Masterson, second by Mr. Shattuck to approve our. Meeting schedule for next year as presented. Is there discussion?
The only thing I could say is if we moved it to Wednesday, I know it makes it hard on the auditor's office, but then we could have our attorney could be here for the whole meeting.
Uh, is there further discussion? So the motion is to approve the schedule as presented. Seeing no other discussion, those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Public input. Sorry, Jesse. Mr. Woodward was first.
Bill Woodward, one two zero nine four Peach Road Plymouth. First things first. Thank you. Thank you very much for all your effort, all your work on the sewer issue. Appreciate it, and so does all the residents. We could not have done without you and the commissioners. Cause it would have never got to state, would have never got heard or any support. So thank you very much. My question is, if you did buy the ban. Could you freeze their assets once you own that ban? Pending. Results, or could you call it due? Something to think about, that's all. So, but my main comment is thank you very much.
Hey, can we get the assets? Uh, according to the light, the, the order says those who pull the liabilities, if we purchase the band, you know, we get the assets, so. In that respect, it's frozen, right?
Thank you.
Jesse, did you want to come forward?
Well, thank you again, uh, for giving the opportunity to address you guys. I know we've had some unexpected expenditures. And, um, there's also some good news. We've got some unexpected opportunities to save some money as well. Uh, going into next year. And so I wanted to present the full council, um, with an opportunity that the commissioners and I have been talking about. I know I shared, uh, with a couple of members. Um, we lost our clinic for our employees last year. Lutheran closed the clinic that we had been using. Um, and, uh, was approached by, uh, Dan Tanner, uh, who runs, uh, Concierge Medicine Practice here in Plymouth. Um, he wanted to offer the county the opportunity to, uh, take advantage of, of, of his practice. Um, and it would be a, a similar, but I think, uh, more robust, um, opportunity for our employees. Um, in order to get a sense about what he was offering, I've actually, uh, signed up and become a, uh, um, a patient of his, uh, myself since August. I've been very impressed with, um, his, uh, attention to detail. I'm, I'm forty-six years old. No one has ever. Suggested that I have a full physical and blood work. And, uh, he found, he found some things. That I was completely, I thought they were normal things. And, um, so it's gotten me the opportunity to get in and get some early treatment on some things that. They're not huge deals, but it could have, you know, some long-term repercussions for my quality of life. And so I'm very glad that I got the opportunity. Uh, to go see him. So I'd like to invite, uh, Dan to come up and, uh, join me, um, share with, uh, the council. Um, his, uh, proposal that the count, that the commissioners have been considering. I believe based on the feedback that I've gotten from the other two commissioners, um, that, uh. We would be willing to engage Dan in his, uh, in his offer if the council sees the value in, uh. What we would pay upfront, but I am confident that having more preventative opportunities. Would save us a lot of money in the long run. So, Dan.
So thank you very much for taking some time. I know it's a long, uh, school night, so I'll try and be brief. This is something that is a very important topic, and that's healthcare accessibility, quality, and then outcomes. That is really the core of what my business is, is I look at individuals, human beings. It's people that need good quality healthcare. The problem with the system, though, not any one individual as a system, is we've grown accustomed to using health insurance like healthcare financing. And when we do that, the very simplest metaphor I give you is if you use your auto insurance to put gas in your vehicle each week, what would your premiums be like? A lot of claims. And it's unfortunate. We need health insurance for things that are expensive. If you have to have surgery, certain medications. But the day-to-day, which is really the lion's share of the, of the driving costs. The day-to-day monitoring, diagnosing, treating, managing chronic disease and managing it well. So that we can reduce the risk of catastrophic outcomes. Is paramount. We have to do this. It's all over the news every day. Here the driving cost, the cost, the cost, the cost. But people are feeling to talk about the outcomes. Why don't we have the great outcomes? A lot of times it's accessibility to care, and frankly, it's, it's cost. If people have a high out-of-pocket deductible. And they have a choice between putting food on the table. Or going to see the doctor again for, uh, a routine visit. I say routine, blood pressure. Uh, diabetes, anxiety, depression. You know, the time that people really want to come in is to get a DOT physical because they can't work without it, right? So what we offer to many organizations is a simple per person, per month membership. And it's outlined in that, uh, document. But it basically gives you unfettered access. There are three providers in my office, three, myself and two of the nurse practitioners. That if you need care, you're going to get it. And the wonderful thing about it is. Healthcare does not have to be, uh, one of your biggest expenditures. It can be downsized significantly. I take care of an organization in this town that has actually a larger number of employees. And they spend about twenty-eight percent of what the county spent on their healthcare. Because they use us. You've already done the biggest, the most challenging step is the decision to become fully self-funded with your insurance plan. That's a scary leap. Well, you've done that, but what you, we failed to do so far, and this is what we hope to do, is secure a safety harness. Which you need the other part of that. You need someone who will contract directly. With, with the county. That does nothing with insurance, has, I have nothing to do with insurance whatsoever. It's simply allocating resources for your employees and their dependents. To have great access to healthcare. What do we include in that? It's spelled out in there. Your biggest, your biggest savings are there's not going to be any copays for any of the people that use our clinic. Because it's just, um, it's like your phone. You pay it, you use it when you need it, right? Um, laboratory costs for the number of employees and dependents that would require annual labs, at least a screen. And make sure that you're healthy, that you don't have kidney failure and no one's keeping an eye on things. Uh, just the, the general wellness labs typically range between seven hundred and fifty, all the way up to fifteen hundred dollars if they're done. Uh, a lab, a hospital, laboratory, things of that nature. I build them into my program costs because I have access to. The wholesale price, which would make your jaw hit the floor if you saw how little we can do this for. But, so it's the same quality. It's actually the same lab many of the hospitals use. We just don't mark that up. I don't want to pass that expense on, rather pass the savings on. I need the knowledge. I need the information. Uh, I need to understand what's going on with folks. That's one example of the many, many things we do. Work comp cases. If we can keep someone from having a reportable work comp, that helps the county. And helps the insurer tremendously. We want to keep those rates down. Uh, if, if somebody goes to, has a back strain and they go to the ER. I'm giving you hypotheticals. And the doctor says, well, I'm going to have you take eight, eight hundred milligram ibuprofen. Here's your prescription. You now have a reportable condition. Where I could say, come to my office. Okay, I think ibuprofen is going to be adequate. Take four of them. Over the counter, and you don't have a reportable. These are just, these are small pieces that add up to a large mass of when you do healthcare the right way, when you deliver it the right way. When we listen with our ears, not with our mouth, and the outcomes are better. And people are healthier. This is a no-brainer. This is a very easy decision. Like I said, the hard decision you've already made. And that is, that's a daring step, right? And I commend you for becoming self-insured. However, it has its pitfalls. Uh, if we, if we let things go out of control, we don't screen people on a regular basis. It only takes one or two dialysis patients to wreck your budget for a long time. Um, we want people to be healthy too. This isn't all just about numbers. I want to see people who are in great shape. Who have optimal weights, who have normal blood pressures, who don't struggle with anxiety, depression, insomnia, hyperlipidemia, uh, et cetera. We want to do the preact, the proactive screenings that are required. So that we catch somebody with a, with a colon polyp until it, and, and, and instead of being stage four colon cancer. These all come through thorough screenings. So participation is very simple. Uh, you mandate that you're adults anyway, that are of age, didn't need to be screened, see us at least once a year. After that, it's up to us. We'll win their hearts and minds. I'm sure you, y'all know there's a shortage of healthcare providers. Seems like every time another doctor retires, no one comes in to fill the void. And it's been going on and on and on to the point. If you call any doctor's office outside of, outside of mine that I'm aware of. You're probably not going to get an appointment as a new patient for at least three months. I had a patient call today and said he needed to be seen. I knew of him, but he's new to me. I'm seeing him Thursday. It's very affordable. This is a, a very easy decision. Your tough decisions have been made. You return on investment here. You already have your budget. You've spent well, well beyond what I would ever. It won't even come close to being a blip on the radar, but what we will see is a massive reduction in your overall spending. Because we're going to treat and prevent. We're going to diagnose early. And we're also not going to burn a hole in your pockets with things like labs. The lab cost, I, I just can't, can't overemphasize it. But what you would spend, every one of you would spend if you went to a lab at a hospital. You, I, it's a fraction. I don't even have to build that. I can build it into my monthly membership, which is very, very low, by the way. It's forty dollars per person per month. And if you're under the age eighteen, it's only twenty dollars per person per month. I'm giving it away. I'm giving it away almost for the, the purpose of to show you that it can work. It can work well. And I'm, I'm not going to say, okay, great, it worked great in twenty-six. Now let's charge you a hundred a month. I'm not going to do that either. We're going to work with you. I want, I want to take care of the folks that run the county. To keep the lights on, to keep the streets working and the fires out, et cetera. It's very important. I think this is one of the most wonderful opportunities we have sitting in front of us. I've been here in my clinic for ten years. On, on my wall in my office hangs my great-great-grandfather's medical license. Uh, from the Internal Revenue Service. It says to manufacture, et cetera, opium, et cetera. And it was one dollar. From the Internal Revenue Service in June of nineteen seventeen. His office is where that was where the Chamber of Commerce office is now. He runs in our family. We've been here as a community of servants and we continue to do so. And I'm asking you please to give us the opportunity to show you how well this can work. Yes.
What is your, your forty dollars per month? What does that include? Is that like if you're used, come in?
If you're ill. What we would do is we would invoice the county monthly.
Okay.
Okay. Basic, because it's a, it's a fluid.
I'm a little bit familiar with it, by the way, cause I, my doctor operates off that same, I pay so much per month and if I go in wherever I want to, really, I mean, I. I had to make an appointment, but.
Yes, it's very transparent. There are no surprises that way. The reason we do it monthly is because if you, you, a few employees leave or a few employees come. We want to be, it's, it's a breathing number. I mean, it's a breathing document. It's not the exact amount, but it's going to be a ballpark amount.
Someone would pay their labs or medicine or.
So what we, we don't bill the insur, we will not bill your insurance plan for anything.
Right.
We won't. Now, especially might, say Jesse needs his hip replaced. He's going to see the specialist and that's where his insurance will do what it, it should do for those kind of things. It's the day-to-day management. Uh, he, I didn't need to bill his insurance to come in and for me to A to Z, top to bottom, check him out. And he was kind enough to disclose those things. Thank you. Uh, but it, it's the same every month. It's like a membership. And that's the easiest way I.
And I can, you know, you talk about the labs. I can testify to that being.
So you.
Like seven or eight hundred dollars. And my insurance would pay part of it. I would pay like two hundred and thirty out of my pocket. And now I pay a tenth of that, less than that, actually.
Yeah, now you can pay zero.
Right.
I mean, in, in addition to, because it's just.
It's the same. And I, I thought, well, I'm going to get a skinny version of what I was getting before. And when I got my report back, it came from LabCorp, which is what everyone uses. And it was exactly the same thing.
So just to, just to reinforce the value of this, right? So for four hundred and eighty dollars per year for each employee. We get that annual physical with the blood work included, zero cost to us additional, zero cost to the employee. Um, that pays for. The value of, you know, of what we're paying for that employee. And I think when we're taking on the liability of saying, we're going to pay for whatever happens to you. I think it's fair to say, you know, let's go in and get you checked out early and make sure that if you're going to have a problem, we get it taken care of early. We have folks that see us every other week. And we have folks that see us once a year. But what it comes down to is, is the concern for the, the cost. If you looked at what you spent last year in lab costs, I'm sure it dwarfs. I'm just using labs as an example. Because everyone needs them. It dwarfs what my cost would be for the entire program for all of your constituents for the whole year. So you really, you already have it in your budget. It's just how you spend it. Tell me about ER. So the ER visits, uh, ER and urgent care are very, uh, they come up. I'm sure that you know, if you look at what, uh, people go to the ER for, sometimes it's a urinary tract infection. Sometimes it's an ear infection. Simple laceration. Um, I can take care of all those things. And there's probably not too many days ago back. My phone doesn't really ring before seven AM or after seven PM. But when it does, I still answer it. And on many occasions, this is Saturday. It's a, and a lady cut her hand cutting an avocado in her kitchen. And her husband calls and says, uh, I know it's a Saturday, but, but I said, well, Notre Dame's not on quite yet. We, we met him, I met her at my office and it took all of about fifteen, twenty minutes to get it done, stitched out the door. And it was before, that, that was the time before she could have even been checked in at the hospital and sat and waited. And she was out and you guess what that cost? There was nothing. There's nothing more. I wholesale medicine. I wholesale medical care. I know, I, you assume you use your pharmacy. I'm not a dispenser. I don't have a pharmacy license.
So forty dollars a month. For eighty, what, what, you know, for a husband and wife and, and all that, that is all they're going to, you don't offer any services over and above. That, that is your complete care.
That's my complete care. You get everything that you would get at any other primary care office. The difference is I'll probably spend more time with you. And I don't, I don't virtually chatter away on a computer. I can, my memory is good enough to do that after you leave the exam room. I always like to make sure the questions are answered. And folks have my, I, I have about four thousand phone number contacts in my phone. Because if people need me, it's sometimes it's the easiest way is just to message me. Because if people need me, sometimes it's the easiest way is just to message me, especially on a weekend. Yes.
You heard Office and Breaman as well?
I did. I, I, I did. We divested that. So Tori Prendergrast was one of my employees. And I wanted her to be able to run her own business. So she does. Yeah, but she, we took care of BCI. And then I, I let Tori have that as she built the business then because it was the right thing to do for her and right thing for us to do at the time.
Jesse, are you proposing that all county employees automatically get this? Or are you saying you sign up thing or?
So, so we've got, we've got a couple of different options and we still have to negotiate the, the finality of it. I was gonna bring something else up and I forgot. One of the other benefits as well, and I haven't talked to Dan about this yet, but I know that, that just kind of the way that, that he thinks. I'm, I'm guessing that he probably also, when he's helping our employees, is also going to be able to make sure they understand the options that they have available for them for, for low-cost care, the, the different programs that we have set up, like the Sharks Program for prescriptions like Kiss X for.
GoodRx, Signal Care. Sometimes it's cheaper to go through one of those than it is to go through your insurance.
Yeah.
And for what reason? I still haven't deciphered that code.
And, and so when they're, when people are at the point of decision-making about where they are going to seek that specialized care that he doesn't cover, he can help them understand, you can do it this way and you can do it this way. And if you do it this way, it's nothing out of pocket for you and the county pays much less, you know? But, so I guess, um, what I'm, what I'm asking is, um, for you guys to say that you would be okay with us, uh, spending upfront or it wouldn't be in one lump sum, but divided in twelve payments throughout the year, roughly a hundred and thirty thousand dollars out of our healthcare budget with the expectation that this is the service that that would provide and that as we move forward between now and the end of the year and beyond, that a lot of the costs that we're incurring right now are going to drop probably more than what we're investing in this program. We spent about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars on ER last year. Yeah. So, you know, if he was able to just eliminate fifty percent of our ER visits, that would save us eighty thousand dollars just. The Lutheran, Lutheran agreement was, was a lot different than what this is. This is a lot more hands-on and in-depth than.
I mean, expense-wise.
The structure was different.
I was gonna say, I can share because I use the Lutheran just for labs. And they had set hours that you could go to and sometimes when you showed up, they still weren't open. Um, and it was a five-dollar copay to go. Um, they drew my blood, but then I got a bill from LabCorp for three hundred dollars. So they still billed our insurance and then I still had to pay three hundred dollars.
So that's the caveat. She, the Ms. Cox said, the Lutheran is still billing your insurance. So you're paying per, per visit on top of the five dollars. I'm not even sure why that, I ain't one to do that. It's a nominal amount of, I don't know, maybe it's to think there's some benefit to it, but it's still billed your insurance. They still used your health insurance like healthcare financing. And so what equates to, say, a level four visit, uh, you know, three hundred and eighty dollars just for the office visit, not to mention the labs. It really burns a hole in the budget. You're going to see the numbers. And so we want to, we want to take care of everyone. It's kind of like the steps that, like I said, you've already taken a step to be self-insured. Now you need to partner with a clinic that can help you utilize that in the best way and keep you, keep a lid on your costs. But then I'll settle for excellent, but I, I prefer exceptionalism when it comes to care. We want to do the best. We want to take care of these folks and make sure everyone's healthy. Say, Jimmy, you have, you have a question?
Yeah, I was gonna, appreciate seeing you, Dan. We've gone back a long way. My brother, Richard, was one of those that did not go and get things tested out. And to make the long story short, colorectal cancer, stage four.
Yes.
And they did the surgery on him and I'll be quiet about that, but the guy did not do it properly. And he had full septus coming in and had to do the surgery the second time, come out on a ventilator. And, uh, his medical bills exceeded two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars and he had to go through full chemo. And luckily they could do it here. But, you know, recently we've read that they're going to close down the facility here and we're not going to have chemo here and infusions and all that stuff. So it's a breath of fresh air that you're going to be able to have somebody in Plymouth, Indiana, that's from Plymouth, Indiana, that's not looking at the bottom line as far as making money and giving care to the people that are here that deserve the care. And I'm proactive with, with what I do and I've been self-employed for years and I would have been, should have been doing what you're proposing right now. But, you know, from, um, for thirty-five years, I paid seven hundred dollars a month with a six thousand dollar deductible and never had a claim. Yes.
Yeah.
And then when I would go to have my physical, I would get the bills from the labs and my share was like three hundred bucks. And I had to pay for the doctor's call too because it was six thousand dollars. But, you know, Dan, what do you, what do you foresee? You know, Marshall County, we, we have a tremendous problem here with healthcare. We, we, I'm sorry, we don't even have a functioning hospital. You cannot, uh, if you're sick here, you cannot go into intensive care. They no longer have it. They have to ship you to South Bend. Uh, you cannot have babies delivered here and now you cannot have, the people that are sick that are at death's door cannot have chemotherapy done here in the next few days. So I think we have a major crisis on our hands.
We do. And that's a travesty. One of the things is to, I think that is, if I'm informed correctly, it's causing the demise because there's no local board of directors anymore. It's centralized with, between Loyola and Trinity. And we have a, a, a redheaded stepchild here. I, I don't know if they're just trying to make it die on the vine, but it's, it's really a shame. Uh, I worked for that organization for years and was very proud of the care that was done. You have cardiology, they talked about a cath lab at one time and then doing orthopedic and trauma surgery and OB, very active. So when we want to recruit, the community wants to recruit somebody, bring them through the hospital, say, hey, here's the doctor, maybe husband-wife doctor team. And they say, wait a minute, where, where's everybody? It's a ghost town and hospital. So that's a whole nother subject, but to your point, yeah, there's a vacuum. And so as these doctors like Rod Kubley and Todd Stilson, who have been pillars of our community and vibrant Harlem's getting closer, no one's filling that void.
Yeah.
And, and, and the population's growing in Marshall County. You know, first stop for healthcare for about twenty thousand Marshall County residents is right out here. But at least if we can filter some of that to say, hey, it's, yeah, it's, it's Friday evening. Your wife's having back pain, little fever, UTI symptoms, come to my office. We run a urinalysis in my office. Yeah, you have a urinary tract infection. Let's give you a shot of rosetin and get you some medicine to get you through the night, pick up the rest of, from the pharmacy tomorrow. We do that frequently. We don't leave people hanging out to dry. We, it's, I'm not doing anything new, believe it or not. I'm doing the way it was done years ago. If, if Jim Robertson delivered you, you probably saw him make a house call. Same with Dr. Gilder Peters.
Or Bowen.
Or, or Bowen. Yes, exactly. So there you go. See?
James Kubley.
He's the guy you want to take golf in case you have a heart, you know? But we want to, we want to build help. I think we have tremendous opportunity. I think every single organization that we take care of says, wow, we should have done that a while ago. It solves many problems.
Uh, I'll tell you, I would have seen you yesterday because when we left church, my third oldest kid said my ear hurts. We drove all the way to Elkhart because I'm like, we're not going to the hospital. And her, she had an ear infection, so we drove to urgent care.
Something that we could have taken care of in about five minutes.
Forty minutes to get in, to drive up there. My wife's filling it out on the way and it was a three-hour ordeal for.
Yeah, it kind of crushes your afternoon, doesn't it?
Yep.
We, we're more than happy to take care of those kind of things.
So, so we've still got to work out the details about what the, exactly the agreement would look like and what it looks like for us to transition into this. Um, and so, um, not asking for a decision that we're going to do this because obviously that's the commissioner's decision ultimately. Um, but I did think it was important to share with you guys so that, um, I know in the past, our, what we did with healthcare was very opaque. We just got a number and it's, are you going to fund that number or not fund that number? So I wanted to share with you guys the thought process that we're having and then give you the opportunity to, to weigh in. I, I would love a vote of support to say that if the commissioners decided to, to sign up for this, that you all are okay with the money being spent that way.
Yeah, I, I still got another question. Um, are we, are, are you guys proposing this be something that is just a benefit towards, you know, the one employee or to?
One employee, spouse, dependents. We want families. Yes.
Is there a different rate for family? Is there?
The reason.
Like you said, the forty.
Sure, it's forty per adult. That, because that's just the bare minimum that I can do this. And we, we only charge twenty for kids because most kids don't need to have their cholesterol checked. Some do, but a few handful. The other thing is, uh, monthly, my business manager, Nick, will send a, a report monthly to show you, this is what the, the services would have cost under the old way. Here's your running kind of fixed cost and here's how much your net savings is. So at the end of the year, you can say, this is how much we spent. This is how much it would have cost the old way. So you'll see that your ROI comes through here probably by the, the middle of March. Because we start screening folks. We want to get them in. And, and like I said, it just a handful of would-be trips to the ER. You're talking about tens of thousands of dollars. But again, uh, to your point, not spending half the day driving to another county and waiting for what to give you an antibiotic.
Two hundred fifty bucks.
Yeah, exactly.
So you still paid for it out of your pocket.
Yeah. Yeah. So this is, this is a wonderful opportunity to, uh, help. And I think that you're going to have happier, healthier, safer employees too.
They can prevent versus reactively bear.
And you have a referral network already set up?
So what we do is, uh, the, we work with Mark Naylor and Andy Aker over at Oasis Bath and Lifestyle. And what we've done is, it's very similar with the insurance. They're capable of doing this is to get a, a preferred, if you will, a cash price almost for these providers because you're paying the bill. And they have settled that way and they, and what they've done is really cut their costs exponentially. Um, because, and then we, we find the best providers. The networks are basically the South Bend Clinic, some of the Beacon doctors like cardiology and some ortho at Beacon, and then South Bend Orthopedic, South Bend Clinic. All the great players, Michigan Hematology Oncology, that's who we work with. We refer to a very selective network, if you will, of people that I know and, and organizations I know that have nothing but good outcomes. We're blessed to have, you know, orthopedic surgeons like Adam Sean and Tyler McGregor that still come to Plymouth. And we refer to them on a regular basis because I don't want to send seventy somewhere and they have a bad outcome. That's just not good. And fortunately for my patients and future patients, that learning curve's over. I've worked with, I know who the good ones are. I don't have to worry about referring in-network. Because if you, historically, if you were here at St. Joe and the best guys at Memorial, uh, there's a guy that can do it at St. Joe and South Bend, Michigan Wauke. You're going to Michigan Wauke. I don't, I don't believe in that. I believe in the best outcome for the best situation. Make sense?
I'll add, my cousin works for Oasis and she called me and she's one of them who does a lot of the numbers and she looks at the report every month. And she said that having Dr. Tanner as a concierge service has drastically saved them money and has drastically brought down their, because they're self-insured as well and has made it, um, much more affordable and has saved them a lot of money. So with that being said, I guess I'll make a motion of support that we support the commissioners to move forward with the concierge service with Dan Tanner next year.
Second thought.
We have a motion by Mrs. Cox, second by Mr. Patterson to support the commissioner, um, initiative to have Mr. Tanner as the concierge service provider as our discussion. Um, I just have a question real quick. It, it's forty per employee plus forty per spouse?
Correct. And then twenty for the children under the age of eighteen.
Okay.
It's only those that sign up for our insurance.
Okay, so you may want to run the numbers. I'm not sure one thirty's the number.
We're gonna have to run the numbers again and ma- and make sure that everything's right. We still got to finalize this. Whatever that number is, the more people we get participating in the program, the more I believe we're going to save. You know, you, you spend that, that forty and it's gonna, you know, return itself. But we'll, before we go forward with the final number, I'll make sure that you guys have a chance to see the contract and, and know what we're looking at, so.
Okay, um, you've heard the motion. Is there further discussion? Chair sees none. Those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Very much.
Take your time, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other public input? Was that a hand up or were you waving to him? I think you were waving, weren't you?
You want to come up, you can.
Again, I just want to encourage the sewer district to go ahead and put this to rest. Call a meeting. You don't need your attorney's approval. You can act as a board. Uh, it's time to put this to rest and save the folks some money.
You can even reach out to us. Sit down with us. I would love to have a conversation with, with individuals from the sewer board.
Okay. Is there any other dis- discussion during the public input? Is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Shaddick, second by Mrs. Johnson to adjourn. Those in favor of adjourn will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we're adjourned.